I call this regular meeting of the Village of Villa Park Planning and Zoning Commission to order. A roll call. Calvert?
Here.
Hofstra?
Here.
Jackson?
Here.
Lemieux?
Here.
Ledke?
Here.
Romano?
Here.
Shulinski? And I am present. With that, we have Quorum. So first item of business will be approval of minutes of February 13th, 2025. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion from Commissioner Ledke. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Amendments to the minutes? Not hearing any? All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. So we have two items of business this evening. Let me really quickly explain how the process will go for each of them. We'll start with a presentation by staff. Then there'll be an opportunity for the petitioner to speak if they wish. They don't need to if they feel like staff has said enough for them. Then we'll have public comments and questions. That will be an opportunity for anybody on that item to speak on that item. Then we will have questions from the commission and discussion by the commission, which are two separate items. And then we'll make a motion probably on all those items and have an action this evening. I would ask that if you expect to speak this evening, or think you might, just stand now and raise your right hand. We'll get everybody sworn in at once. So if you think you want to make a public comment, even if you don't know, otherwise I'll swear you in individually when you come up, which takes a little bit longer. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony given these proceedings is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so the first item is PZ 2503 for 749 North Harvard. This is a variation. Rachel, when you're ready.
Thank you. All right, so we are going to be looking at 749 North Harvard Avenue. The petitioner is requesting a variation for the side setbacks. There is a street side setback and an interior side setback. So the petitioner is proposing an addition to the existing building following along the existing exterior walls. On the south side, the setback requirement is 10 feet. The addition would encroach by 6.9 feet, which is the same as the existing wall. And then on the north side, the setback requirement is 35 feet, and that is due to the alley, which is adjacent to the building. That's a unique feature about this lot. Because of the alley, the setback is 35 feet. So this addition would encroach by 28.1 feet, which is the same as the existing wall. If the petitioner were to follow the required setbacks, the width of the building would only be five feet wide. So it would be unusable and very impractical for their business. The plan that they're proposing is just to continue along the existing walls, which is a much more feasible solution. And the rear setback with the addition would still be in compliance. There's no variation needed for the rear. This is an image of the site plan. This yellow area here is where the addition would be. So it's just continuing along the existing exterior walls. This is an aerial view of the building. You can see the alleyway along here, and then there would still be space along the other side. So there is that. And the standards that we are looking for is just looking at the hardship of the petitioner, the uniqueness of the situation. Would there be a reasonable return on their use? And does this variation alter the essential character?
Okay, thank you very much. Does the petitioner have anything they want to add to this this evening? I assume the petitioner's here. Yeah, if you want, just come up and state your name and try to speak into the mic because we are being recorded.
I'm Dan from Industrial Battery. That's our family business. It's a second generation ownership. We originally bought the business from a family in 1998. My dad ran it for 25 years. I finally took over. With our new growth of our business, we have run out of space. So we need to add additional warehouse space. It'll get the back of our lot cleaned up, the front of our lot cleaned up, along with giving us extra space within the existing building to operate more efficiently.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Please come up and just state your name and...
Hi, Matthew Yatsky. Just a quick question. Would such an addition preclude fire emergency or ambulatory equipment access to your entire property in the event of a fire or an accident on scene?
Mark, are you prepared to answer that?
Um, yeah, thank you. Great question. No, there is still adequate access to the rear of the site. If you remember, there's actually a public alley on the north, which gives you vehicular access to the rear of the entire site.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your question. All right, anyone else from the public wishing to speak on this? Comment or question? All right, seeing none, I will move to questions from the commission if there is any.
Can you put up that aerial view again? When you do this addition, you're showing three parking spaces out in front of the building on the Harvard side. Are you going to continue to park along the alley? Are those people associated with your business?
They are associated with our business.
Because that restricts fire protection to get after an emergency.
Yeah, I mean, we can...
For the microphone, please. Thank you.
I mean, the only reason we park vehicles there is just because we have access to it. But if there was ever an issue or an emergency, we'd be able to get those vehicles out of the way. But we also have a lot more parking lot in the front of our building to be able to park more vehicles there.
And what is the squares in the front of the building there?
Those are products that we carry. Like I said, we're out of space. We have to put stuff outside, and it's a real pain in the butt for us to have to take stuff in and out of the building every single morning.
Okay.
So to have the additional space in the back, which is just unused space, would alleviate all that stuff being outside.
And what's behind the building now?
Uh, that's a storage trailer.
Okay.
That's mostly just personal junk of my dad's. Thirty years of accumulation, which would all be gone, just because we want to have the addition there. And I don't have any usage for... I'm straight business. I don't have junk. So I would get rid of all of it.
Incentive to sort through some family heirlooms?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Any questions down this way?
No.
Any other questions to my right?
Nothing.
Okay, any discussion by the commission?
The only comment I have is it seems like down the block, the construction seems to be very similar to the other buildings on the block. And for that reason, I'm inclined to grant this.
Yeah.
The, you know, the lots to the south have very similar encroachments.
Yeah, and for an industrial use, this is a tight site, right? It's, I mean, that's 50 by what? Yeah, that's almost exactly the size of my residential property. It's 50 by 188. So there's definitely hardship in terms of the size and the shape of the property in regards to those setback requirements. It's fairly well expressed by the size of what could be built on there with the current setbacks, which would be five feet wide. They're keeping it in line with the existing building. So that's good.
Jason, the other comment is that it appears that it is the northernmost plot in the industrial area. There's, I think, a gas station just to the north of there, but that's totally a separate parcel and accessed separately. I can't see that this construction would affect anyone to the north or to the south.
No, and they're meeting the setback to the east, the rear setback. So that's, you're right, in terms of like light and air to adjacent properties and all that, I don't have a problem with it. Anybody else have any comments or discussion? And then if not, we'd need somebody to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. To recommend approval of PZ-2503 for a variation from Table 3-2 of Article 3, Section 3.2, Land Lot and Building Regulations and Zoning Ordinance to reduce the minimum street side north setback to six feet. And to reduce the minimum interior side south setback requirements to three feet as depicted in Exhibit A for 749 North Harvard Avenue.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
A second from Commissioner Jackson. Any questions or comments on the motion? Okay, so roll call. This is in the affirmative for recommending approval. Calvert?
Yes.
Hofstra?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yeah.
Lemieux?
Yes.
Ledke?
Yes.
Romano?
Yes.
I too vote yes. And with that, our recommendation will pass to the village board, and they have the final say on the matter. So good luck. Thank you. Okay, our next item will be PZ 2505. This is the comprehensive plan. I'm going to ask for minor agenda modification. I think we should just combine questions and discussion when we get to that point because it's going to all overlap, I think. Anybody having problems with that?
I concur.
Okay. So I believe we're starting with a presentation from staff. All right, whenever you're ready, Mark.
Thank you. So as an opening, I just wanted to set the stage of how we got here. So we are, the village, is petitioning a public hearing to consider the recommendation for the adoption of the comprehensive plan as defined in 65 ILCS 5111251, to prepare and recommend to the corporate authorities a comprehensive plan for the present and future development or redevelopment of the municipality. That's now on the public record. That's what we're doing here. All right, we did a legal notice in the Daily Herald on February 20th, 2025, in advance of the public hearing. Okay, there's the legal stuff. So how we actually got here. We started with an RFP because we said we needed a new comprehensive plan. The one we have right now is 2009, was the last time it was adopted. Couple of years have gone by, some things happened, some things didn't happen. The village board a few years ago said, "We need a new document to define what we should be over the next 20 years." We ended up hiring House Levine and Associates, gentleman behind me, to work on that comprehensive plan. We started with a kickoff in existing conditions analysis of the community, which resulted in a memo that we actually presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in February 8th of '24. From there, we engaged in a significant amount of public engagement, most notably some business workshops, stakeholder interviews, a community visioning workshop that was held in the evening. And then even right now, we're open for public comments on the draft comprehensive plan, all part of the public engagement. We did plan visioning and key recommendations, which resulted in a memo that came to the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 13th of '24, which also then went to the village board on June 24th of '24. And then most recently, we had the draft comprehensive plan open for public comments starting on February 13th, and then have hosted two open houses, one on February 26th, 2025, and most recently, March 13th, 2025. With that, I'll turn it over to House Levine for a more in-depth presentation on the plan itself.
All right, thanks, Mark. Whenever you're ready.
This one right here?
All right, thanks, Mark, and thank you to the chair and to the PCC for having us here tonight. It has been a really excellent process, and it's been very good to work with you all on this process and with staff and with the whole community. So I'm just going to give a high-level overview, cover some of the same stuff that Mark did in a little bit different way, and then just note some of the key sections of this new document that you all have in front of you. And then, of course, I'm available for questions as well. And I should have stated my name. My name is Josh Kuntz. I'm with House Levine, where the firm that was tasked with doing the comprehensive plan process in partnership with you all. So tonight, just a quick planning process update, review and discuss the draft comprehensive plan, and then talk next steps. So project overview, you've all seen this slide before, I've shared it before, but some of the reasons to do a comprehensive plan. So first and foremost, at its most aspirational, we're telling the village's story. We're sharing your vision. The lofty aspirational center of a comprehensive plan is the vision statement. A good comprehensive plan is a tool, a policy guide, to help you all when you make decisions on development proposals. You can turn to this as a guide and say, "Does this generally fit with the guidance of our policy document?" It's a foundation for the regulatory framework. So as you consider updates to your regulations, your code of ordinances, do they fit and do they move along the vision of the comprehensive plan? A good plan will help coordinate local and regional initiatives. You have a regional trail here in your community that extends outside of your municipal boundaries, so you know even better than most communities that you have to look outside yourselves and partner with the county, with your neighboring municipalities, with IDOT, with different organizations to get things done. So it helps with that coordination. A comprehensive plan can also support the CIP and your year-to-year budgeting, so your short-term planning. How are you going to spend the public dollar? What are we going to prioritize this year as we do that budgeting? There's an implementation section in this plan, which I'll show you at the end, that can help act as that checklist. How are we moving along in the process, and what are some things we may want to allocate funding toward this year? It can tee up future studies. So a good comprehensive plan can help identify things that maybe you want to do a little further digging in. It also can provide some of that toehold language as you pursue grant funding for a stormwater grant, or an alley improvement, or bike infrastructure. If you've got that language in your comprehensive plan, you can pursue some of those things and hopefully be much more successful as you pursue them. And then lastly, and importantly, a good comprehensive plan can inform and educate the community. So these are no longer documents that sort of live on the planner's shelf. They're not as dense as they used to be. We do strongly believe that these should be written in plain English so that anybody can read and understand them and get a good sense of where the village wants to go over the next couple of decades. You shouldn't have to be a land use lawyer or an urban planner to understand. There shouldn't be jargon in here. It should be something that anybody can sort of pick up and get a sense of direction, fair certainty, where does the village want to go? What are we looking at for the next 20 years? Mark touched on this, but there is Illinois-enabling statutes that direct municipalities to do comprehensive plans. The Illinois language is a little looser and high-level than some states. Some states are really strict with what has to be in your comprehensive plan, but these are some of the statutes that are up there. So it is an advisory document. It's not regulatory. It does not regulate the control or use of private property, except where implemented by zoning ordinances. Comprehensive plan, corporate authorities can designate an official land use map, so that's what this is. This is your future land use map. The municipality has the power to do that. The comprehensive plan covers the whole area within the plan, and also municipalities in Illinois can plan for the unincorporated area up to one and a half miles outside of the municipal boundary. So not particularly relevant in Villa Park, but you do have some unincorporated pockets, and you'll notice that the future land use map covers those unincorporated pockets as well. And that's why, because the statutes allow you to plan for areas that are up to a mile and a half outside of your municipal boundary. And then it must be publicly available. Another statute, this is the one that Mark referenced, but a planning commission and a municipality can adopt a comprehensive plan to guide that decision-making over the next couple of decades. And then lastly, this doesn't totally apply here, but the statutes do indicate if you were to be applying for state funding, these are some of the things to do your comprehensive plan. These are some of the things that then the state would say, "Well, if you're getting funding from us, then these have to be in the comprehensive plan." So again, Illinois doesn't mandate that these have to be, but I can tell you that this comprehensive plan does hit on each one of these requirements that do find themselves in the Illinois statute. So it does meet all these requirements, even though it technically doesn't have to. So overall, we've again shown you this slide as well. Like Mark said, we went through a variety of different processes, but really, the comprehensive plan, even though we had this long six-step, nearly two-year process, really only had to do three things. So establish where we are today in the existing conditions memorandum, that deep dive into sort of the good, the bad, the ugly, what do we know about the community before we get into visioning and goals and key recommendations. When we got to the visioning, that's where we started to define where we want to go as a village. That's the aspirational centerpiece of the plan, the vision statement. We worked on that all here with you all in this room. We went through the vision statement. We talked about how goals need to be achievable, you know? You need to be able to see how the village can work toward those goals, and we made edits to those based on the comments and feedback with you all and with staff. And then lastly, we are finally here at the roadmap. How are we going to get there? A lot of times, I say, if we were to just sort of turn in the vision statement and say, "Here's your plan," you would rightfully be saying, "Sounds great. We can all get behind this. Looks good. We all agree the village should be more this or more that, or like, we're doing these things good, but how are we going to do all this stuff?" And that's what the comprehensive plan is. It's a guide. It tells you how you're going to start working toward all those things that are in that vision and goals. We had, like Mark noted, a very good process of outreach and engagement, not just thanks to us, of course, thanks to those of you who are champions for the planning process, to staff. I put this note on here this morning, 900 points of engagement. This is one area where I would recommend that we update the current draft document, which is a little bit lower than that, but we've had some engagement online since then with the online comment box. We had a good turnout at the open house tonight, and I'd actually say it's probably closer to 920 or 930, even with the folks who came out tonight. So there's been a good chunk of the community that has tuned into this process and has participated along the way, and that's what you want to see. So what we have now ultimately is, you know, don't try to remember everything that Mark and I just said, but if you remember one thing about a comprehensive plan at its core, this is what a comprehensive plan is. It's a foundation for decision-making, whether you're a planning and zoning commissioner who's considering proposals, development, you know, additions to buildings. This can help guide that decision-making. If you're a board member who's thinking through on the next phase of the development proposal, or "We've got to consider this something about our community that we need to do," it can be that foundation for decision-making. Even if you're a business owner or a homeowner, you can take a look, you can say, you know, "What does the village have in mind long-term? What does the village want to see on the corridor where my business is? And what is that going to be like?" So this really is a document that helps make decisions. It's a foundation for decision-making. So we've divided the plan into these sections with the core, that core, the core elements being land use and development, transportation and mobility, community facilities, and public infrastructure. I'm just going to go at a high level over some of these. So in the introductory section, you're going to see what is a comprehensive plan? What was our process? How did we get here? How is our plan organized? What kind of community outreach did we have? You'll see a regional settings map. Where is Villa Park located in the region? Some notes on past plans and studies and demographics. And some of those are adapted from that existing conditions memorandum that we reviewed with you all. So you can see what that looks like here on these example pages. One of the cool things we did is we got a lot of good feedback, and those circles with the quotes in them are pulled directly from some of the takeaways from online outreach and in-person outreach, some of the things that people said along the way. Again, this aspirational core of the document, you have a community vision statement and a set of goals that are achievable. You may remember, I think I used that example of a six-minute mile as a goal, something that maybe not everyone is going to fully achieve, but there are a lot of steps you can take to work toward that. After that, we get into the land use and development chapter, and overall, you'll see your future land use map. Mentioned that in the Illinois municipal statutes with some land use influences. So as you know, the village is largely landlocked, so the existing land uses and opportunities for growth are heavily influenced by that. There's, you're not going to get a huge massive development for the most part. There's going to be incremental change over time, and that's what the plan is all about. And also about areas that are going to be maintained. The future land use plan, which is the core of this document, the overall future land use map, again, it's about future land use. It's not a zoning map. It's a policy map. In the perfect build-out scenario, over 20 years, what would land use look like for every parcel in the village? Housing areas and neighborhoods, so what are housing and neighborhoods going to look like? What is economic development going to look like? And then something that is a feature of this plan, that not every comprehensive plan has, is a deeper dive study on six key subareas, three corridors and three sort of key nodes. So we zoomed in a little bit from the 20,000 view. Go back a second. Zoomed in a little bit from the 20,000 view village-wide into some of these key areas and did some detailed planning. Before I get to the future land use map page, I did want to share this slide. I think I might have shared it before. But sometimes when we present a future land use map, or when a comprehensive plan comes up for adoption, there will be the perception that this is a zoning map. It's colors on a map. So why is this red? Why is this yellow? It's important to remember that a land use framework is a policy guide. It describes the desired future development and pattern. It fits with that aspirational vision and that set of goals, where and how would we want to develop long-term over the next 20 years? I'm kind of preaching to the choir a little bit because you all know your zoning code, but a zoning code regulates what kinds of uses are permitted on specific parcels, sets things like design development... things like design, development requirements and standards, density, parking, signs, landscaping. And the zoning map is regulatory. It's the law for the village. So if you're doing things right, you can use your zoning designations to sort of implement the future land use map over time. And we are talking decades out here. So zoning implements land use. And these are just a few pages. Again, you can see how this is structured. It's a little bit small up there on the screen, but the future land use plan is the map right up here. Then we have a housing and neighborhoods framework. So instead of stopping at the future land use level, we consider the neighborhoods as well from a different perspective. What is the character of the neighborhoods? How does one neighborhood in this part of the community differ from this part of the community? They may both be single family on the land use map, but what are some of the characteristics of these different areas? We did the same with the economic development framework. What's the difference between the different corridors and where is different types of investment going to occur? And then these are the subareas. You can see instead of sitting at the village-wide view, we zoomed in on some key areas, North Avenue, St. Charles, Roosevelt Road, Uptown, Old Town District, Historic Ardmore. And I think there's one more there. But I'll just say that these, each of these include a potential catalyst site development. And you'll remember that those are areas, you know, if they were to change, if they were to develop in this way, they may have sort of a catalytic effect on that subarea. They may drive future development. And you can see we designed these models specifically to be sort of blocky in the land use colors. So they give sort of an idea of what the massing might look like if that development were to occur, but these aren't architectural renderings or detailed site plans. They're there to be a tool that the village can use as you review development and see, you know, does this sort of fit with the direction that we had in our comprehensive The transportation and mobility chapter, policies and recommendations for the roadway network, active transportation, so bike and pedestrian mobility, the sidewalk network and for transit. And then community facilities and public infrastructure, so village services, your parks and recreation, and then a character and identity section. And then lastly, the implementation section. So something that often comes up, how are we going to get all this done? What, you know, how is the village going to pay for this? Not all of these are things that the village has to pay for. Some of them are partnerships. Some of them are going to be opportunities to seek grant funding, and that's what the strategy section of this chapter identifies. How are we going to use this document? Who are our partners? What are the funding sources that are out there? What are some of the things we should consider as we start working toward this long-term vision? And then the implementation matrix takes all of those recommendations, all the should statements that are in your comprehensive plan, distills it down to its actions and applies partnerships and prioritization so you can sort of track along the way, how are we doing with the guidance of our guiding document? Next steps. If there's any finalization that's discussed here tonight, we'll make the final tweaks and we'll prepare the adoption draft based on input from this public hearing and from the open house that we had tonight. And then the final draft will go to the village board. So I am available if you all have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Anyone from the public with questions or comments on this? We'll have discussion and comments up here, I know for sure, but this would be your opportunity from the public if you have anything you want to say, questions that you want to ask based on what you've seen. You could just come up to the podium and state your name if anybody's interested. Yeah, please, just come up.
Bonnyarkey, I live at 16 South Illinois. Unfortunately, I think somebody from the neighborhood panicked and sent around a thing indicating that you might change our area from Illinois Street to the rec building now as multifamily. And my biggest concern is that it doesn't get changed. I don't care if it's in the comprehensive plan because I know what that's all about, but I would be against, I mean, who, if the zoning got changed, who would actually change it? Would it come to you guys first and then the village board?
Yes, so to answer that for you, if there was a zoning change recommended for that, for anywhere in the village, usually that could be implemented, that could be requested by a private landowner. It could be put in motion by the village through staff. But you would request, there would be a request for rezoning, there'd be an application process for that. The property owner and surrounding properties would be noticed, legally noticed. There's rules for that in our zoning ordinance and in state law. So you'd be noticed. There'd be a public hearing here, very similar to this. People, there'd be discussion, people would be allowed to comment. And then the village board would be the final decision makers on that. So whatever this body would recommend would pass the village board, and there would be additional opportunity to comment both directly or at a village board meeting with the elected officials.
Okay. So that even, even if this does come to fruition of changing it to multifamily, how would it affect the homeowners currently as far as property taxes, resale of their homes? I don't know if you can answer that, but.
I mean, I'm not the county assessor, but the underlying zoning of your property is not going to have a lot of impact on the assessed value of your property. It's more about the improvements that are on that property.
Okay. I think, let me devote Chuck. Nope, that was it. Because I'm just, I don't like the idea of being zoned as multifamily.
Yeah.
I understand it in the comprehensive plan that that's, like I keep telling everybody, I'll be dead before that happens.
Yeah, and if there was a plan to, at any point, to rezone your property, there would be a process that would be followed. And the rezoning of your property in and of itself doesn't do anything to your property. If we were to rezone your property to multifamily residential today, you could continue to live until you decide you want to sell it to somebody who is willing to pay what you think it's worth. What they do with it after that would be obviously up to that person, but, you know, there's, you know, nobody's going to come and take your property or nothing like that.
Hopefully. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if you would like me to expand a little bit?
Yeah.
Sure. This has been the number one question that staff has been fielding since we went public with the document in February 13. It came up at the open house at the rec center. It came up at the open house at Village Hall. It obviously came up as a question right now. There is definitely some misinformation that was spread that I think that was the neighbor she was referring to. The word zoning was used inappropriately. This is not a zoning document. I bring back to the slide that Josh showed. This is a land use framework. We are not rezoning, and I just want to say it out loud because I told people that I would be on camera tonight. We are not rezoning the property. I'm passionate and a promise right now. We are not rezoning the property. This is a land use document, future land use. We are not rezoning the property.
Yes, when it comes to comprehensive plans, I'm a planner. We've got the planners, both on staff and Halsey Levine, with comprehensive plan, the word we like to use, and I heard it used in that room a lot, is aspirational. This is not a direct action. It's where we would like to be, five years, 10 years, 15 years. With some of these, you might be looking at two decades. It might bleed into another comprehensive plan, right? Because it relies on both the private landowners, the market, the developers, the village's actions. All those things have to come together to make it happen. And some of them will. We've seen some of those things happen over the last 15 years, especially along Villa Avenue, around the historical museum where we've done improvements, maybe someday at the train station. But.
Uptown.
Uptown, yes. We call it uptown now. But some of what started to happen there was because of the previous comprehensive plan. It hasn't come to fruition, but actions were taken by the village, changes to zoning around the train station and so on, studies that were done in that area, some of the Ardmore Avenue improvements that are up there, were all kind of envisioned by the comprehensive plan. That hasn't gotten over the hump yet, but maybe this will give it another push. All right, any other comments or questions from the public?
I'm Kathy Frye. I'm at 53 South Euclid and used to work for American Planning Association. So I know the heart of this is a very good strategic idea for any village. What, is there anything that's in the forefront that the village is looking at as part of this plan that you're going to be maybe focusing on? Can you share any of that?
Well, I'm sure we'll be discussing some of it as we go through, but just as an idea real quick, like the identified subareas are the North Avenue corridor. You know, it primarily focuses on reduction in parking in some of the large, like North Park Mall, improvements along the south side of North Avenue where it could use some. We've seen some turnover there. I mean, just with Thornton's and Bell Tire, and you're starting to see some new development up there. Maybe those with this comprehensive plan push things farther. St. Charles Road, I think the big one for St. Charles Road, this was in the previous comprehensive plan. I think this talks about it in a more kind of realistic way maybe, but is bringing, making St. Charles walkable. Because anybody who lives here knows it's not, and that's the real barrier between north and south, not the railroad tracks. Roosevelt Road corridor, again, you're talking parking reduction, development on some key sites, maybe some annexation. The Uptown District, which is what we're now calling the train station area. I think we know what the big project up there is. But also opportunities for multifamily in some of those areas where there's aging multifamily. The Old Town District, which is, you know, Villa, and we've got the project that's set to hopefully break ground there soon, the Union, which is a 200 and some unit, which is kind of, the comprehensive plan has allowed that to take place, I think, the previous one. This talks to that more. And then the Historic Ardmore District, we all know that, and we're seeing development there. And so the plans for that hopefully push some of that east, and there's some key development sites, and we'll be talking about some of that, I assure, as we go through. After we're done, I think there were the subarea maps in the room. So if you get bored here and you want to pop in the other room and look at subarea maps, you can, or they'll be up for a few minutes after the hearing tonight. Or you can look at all this. The whole thing's available online. So you could zoom in on any area you want and, yeah, but those, kind of the big picture stuff.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And just for clarity, piggyback on the previous question, notification by the village, if you were going to rezone residential into more of a multifamily zoning, that would be done legally from the village, right?
Yes.
We wouldn't have someone passing out flyers.
No, that would be done, I mean, if the village was doing it, the village would be noticing you. If a developer was developing property around you, there's a process, they go through the process, but, you know, they have to show that they've gone through the process.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I apologize, I wore hearing aids, so.
Oh, no problem.
This is what I got stuck in my shrubs about this meeting. I know you were saying, we're not doing any zoning right now, everything else, but this note sure says you are. And you just mentioned the, what's called the Villa Park, this could be the St. Charles area and the four blocks just west of where you built the brand-new athletic facility or workout facility. So there's a bunch of us that live on Summit Avenue, I know for sure, and we're saying, hey, when's this thing going to hit? Multifamily condos are mentioned and that kind of stuff. So that's why we came here tonight to try and figure out what's going on. I mean, I suggest that you reissue this thing and maybe saying this is for future. This sounds like it's imminent.
We didn't issue that. That was not issued by the village.
Propaganda.
That was, that was, that was not the village. That was privately created by someone from the community or maybe outside the community. I don't know.
Okay.
This is, this is our document, 70 pages.
I went online to take a look at it.
That is, that was, I don't want to use the term misinformation, but it was somebody's personal opinion about what this document means.
Okay, thank you.
Misinterpretation of facts, let's call it that.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so if, so we now have, I see no more questions or comments from the public. So questions, comments, discussion up here. I don't know the best way to handle this. I've reviewed it. I've sent comments to Mark that I know got passed on to Halsey Levine. I don't think we necessarily need to go through it page by page, but if anybody has specific items, items that they've reviewed and they have questions about, or if we want to look at the subarea plans a little bit, if.
Jason, I did have comments, but they're just minor, minor comments, and maybe I should do that privately. They really, they're not that significant, but they might be helpful to some of the residents.
Yeah, and depending on which draft you have a printout of, they might have been caught.
Yeah, we've been cleaning up throughout the process, obviously, typos and some minor adjustments, but any comments that you have, we will gladly take now, but obviously, this is the public hearing. Feel free.
Yeah, so I.
I can do it pretty quickly, I think.
And I have the latest draft, so I could kind of go through and, as you mentioned, we could see if it's something that's been caught or if it's something that should be caught.
What is the way to strip?
It was in the packet, it came out two days ago.
That's correct, yep. We picked up some last-minute typos and adjustments. We wanted to make sure that you made the recommendation on the latest and greatest. So that was resent out on Thursday.
But the packet that went out on Thursday or Friday was fairly updated.
Yeah.
It had caught most of those changes. There were a few this week, but.
And just to clarify, we updated it online as well, so anyone that went to it also had the same one that you guys have.
Good.
Okay. One thing that I thought was very important is the purpose of the comprehensive plan, and it was discussed here, but I didn't see it identified on the plan, especially on page four. It is a very good idea and it will help us for securing available grants. And we, you know, the village doesn't just get money, they have to apply for these grants and demonstrate a need for it. And if that could be clarified so that residents understand why we spent money on this report. Let's see. Let's see, moving on.
Oh, so you're saying you, you think there should be a reference to this sort of being almost a requirement of a lot of grant funding?
Even though it's not a...
Yes, that is important.
Yes, even though it's not a strict requirement, it's extremely helpful in securing our grants that we want.
While we're on purpose, one thing that I like to point out that residents often don't know and wasn't mentioned, and I don't think it needs to be in the comprehensive plan. But when it comes to potential land use disputes, whether legal or whether judicial or not, a comprehensive plan is very important because the village should be making decisions based on that. And if the comprehensive plan is very outdated or the decisions are not in keeping with the comprehensive plan, then that actually matters in court, before juries and before judges. I've been there a few times. So having an updated comprehensive plan is important because if somebody questions your decision or if you make a decision that the village opposes and your decision is more in keeping with the comprehensive plan than what they tell you to do, and it ends up in a lawsuit, it's to your benefit that the comprehensive plan is up to date. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I was also recommending that the garden aspect of our village be specifically referenced. We, you know, we've talked about it in, in our planning and zoning. And I think we need to emphasize that more. And there is ways to do that. One, one is that we can require landscaping plans for new construction or major renovations. And then we can also have periodic inspections of our major landscaping, especially the public landscaping. So just to ensure that we're continuing to, you know, continuing with, to promote our garden aspect of the, the village. I, I think, I'm trying to promote some pride in, in the village. And I think, I think I, I want to bring us up to the level of Elmhurst and Lombard and Oak Park. Those are, those are villages that are, they make, or they promote that type of garden aspect in their villages. Also, one of the specific things, and I did notice that on page seven, we talked about the sound barrier along Route 83. And in the past month or two months, CAMED has been out there. And they've been doing their landscaping, which I would have to say is not very aesthetically pleasing. It's strictly functional. And I think IDOT has also done some things that are not, are not acceptable. What they've done is they've put up a sound fence that's ineffective. And it's due to the grade separations out there. If you go along, if you go along Route 83, you'll find out the effective height of their sound fence is probably about four feet. And then the other thing is, we have enormous gaps underneath it, which are in excess of 12 inches. So it's ineffective. And I think people, especially in the spring, they've started to notice all throughout the village, the, the noise that's coming out with the motorcycles and the, you know, the loud trucks are especially, are especially noticeable now. And it's because of this. And what I'm saying is, we can partner, another partner is IDOT. They, they owe it to us and CAMED. And then the utilities, the, the low voltage utilities like Verizon and Comcast, they're going to be doing things like this too. They're going to be, they're going to be trimming. They usually do it after Commonwealth Edison. And they usually meet with the village. I've heard about the, they have meetings with the village and there's discussions. We can, we can partner with them and set a standard for them. So that can, that can also be a, so they can be a, a funding source as well. Let's see. The, you know, we're, we're also promoting affordable housing, which includes Section 8. And usually that's frightening to a lot of people. And affordable housing can be well-done. And we can partner with, with agencies like Habitat for Humanity. They've done it very effectively. And what they do is they require homebuyer education classes. And, and they also screen applicants. And they have requirements for the people that, you know, that are allowed into the affordable housing. So. I would say, those are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thanks.
For clarification?
Yeah.
So I think we picked up a lot of the stuff. So I mean, right now I've got the, the partner list and the potential funding sources. And we identified IDOT so we can expand that on the other telecoms and whatnot. And then obviously list IDOT and anyone else that we think has deep pockets of potential funding source. So I'm good with that. We picked up on the branding, the Villa, the Garden Village expanding on the, on the branding. Obviously, we can work with language to bolster that. The one thing that I missed was a direct reference to Section 8. I don't know where that is.
Oh, that's affordable housing, if we...
Section 8 is an adequate term. I don't think we use that anymore.
We do mention affordable housing, that is an act. But that particular terminology, I don't think is in the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to clarify. Did I miss something?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. You good for now?
Thanks, Lee.
Okay. I'm going to make one small mention that you guys can decide if it makes sense or not. When I was listening to Josh discussing the process, I realized there's very little about, I mean, there's a lot of conditions here, but I wonder if having the existing conditions memo as an appendix is worthwhile? Think about it, because there's no existing land use map, for instance. But, Josh, you look, you have a comment?
We would definitely recommend maintaining the existing conditions memorandum on the website. We, it's up, it is up to the village, but we typically don't recommend attaching it to the back of the plan just because it does, big PDF starts to get kind of cumbersome for people.
Yeah, that's true.
So we, however it's ultimately going to be, we'd recommend two links or two buttons to the two different documents. So if somebody really does want to dig deep into the, the baseline information that supports the comp plan, they could click it if you, if they wanted to. But we do, we could put in the, the existing conditions or existing land use map into the, the community profile section.
Because I, I actually was reviewing the 1984 comprehensive plan. And, yeah, I know, it's a lot of words in that thing. Not very many pictures. The pictures that are in there are pretty, but it's mostly words. And it's, oh, it's like 100 and some pages or something of words. Which is actually, I recommend, I do recommend reading it because some of it was written, a lot of it was written by residents, right? And so their personal takes on the village. And there was one about, I don't remember the exact words, but it was something about our, our mental relationship with Oak Brook. That I found interesting at the time. But, yeah, I mean, including the, even just including the existing land use map, if possible. My, my concern is just like, as we go 10 years from now, are those two things still living in the same place?
Yeah, along those lines, my recommendation would be to include the map in the same scale that we have the village-wide future land use, the housing and neighborhood, the economic development, in that same expectation, but not the full memo. That memo and the stateful interview and all those other planning documents will live on the village website on the comprehensive plan page.
Okay.
Yeah, but yeah, the map makes sense.
That's fine, and maybe there's just a handful of blurbs about the, a little small, I don't know what the best way to do it is, but you know what I'm getting at.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, existing land use, I'm good with that.
So if somebody tries to compare 10 years from now, and say, this is where we are, this is where we've been.
Or, you know, '84, how many years ago?
Yeah.
Forty.
Thank you, Chair.
Yep.
So Jason, maybe you can answer this, or Mark, or...
I mean, I love the plan, I love the direction, you know, it's, it's a guide, it's an outline. Who, in terms of the village, owns accountability for making sure? Because that's, that's the problem with it, anytime you bring a consultant or something, who owns accountability to making sure we're staying on target with this? I mean, we're appointed commissioners here, we're, we recommend. Village Board's elected, right? They come and go. So is this owned by the development office to make sure that we stay on track? And then we're bringing development in, they're saying, are we doing this in one of the districts, you know?
I'm going to turn it over to Mark, but I, my comment would be every official in the village. Appointed, elected, paid.
But is that so dispersed, that means nobody's really accountable for it?
That sometimes does happen. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Yeah, so my answer was us. That's who is responsible. Because there's so many different people throughout the planning process that are at different levels of it, right? Staff starts with, somebody wants to do something on their property. Let's see what the comprehensive plan says. Or staff is trying to incentivize people to come into the village because we know the comprehensive, comprehensive plan tells us we want these certain things. So staff is, you know, the first one. We're in it pretty much all the time, right? Every planning and zoning petition in our staff memo has a blurb about what the comprehensive plan says. That's already happening right now on the existing one. So that'll continue. And obviously, it will be a little bit more in-depth because it's brand-new and we're going to make sure we're on it, right? The next level is then you guys. Because someone can petition that is in direct conflict with what it says. So then, are you guys, as a recommending body, saying, you know what, we just did this. These great guys from House Levine just came here and said, this is what we should do. You know what, this is in direct conflict, I'm not going to recommend that. The next level is that, even with a no recommendation, it still gets to go to the village board. They can have their day in court. And the village board has to acknowledge, hey, staff said no. Planning and zoning recommended no, the comprehensive plan tells us we want something else. So it's all those different levels. And the, obviously, the community's saying, yeah, we stand by that. Or, you know what, we're 15 years into this, maybe we should talk about amending this comprehensive plan because so much has happened. And then that, again, is a full public process. So really, it's everybody.
And there's nothing to stop the village from amending it periodically. Especially if there's significant change in an area or a subarea.
Yeah, correct.
And the only thing that stops this is either having the money or the technical know-how, depending on what the case may be. But...
Absolutely.
Some communities have subarea maps that they update periodically. I mean, they're, I don't know if Naperville still does, but at one point they had subarea maps that they updated periodically separately because they were developing so fast that to keep the comprehensive plan updated was essentially impossible. We don't have that problem. We don't have any land to expand into. But there's always opportunities for us to look at it down the road, too. If something, if you pick it up and you're like, boy, that's nothing like that anymore.
Realistically, in five years from now, we're going to see what was accomplished and what wasn't. And then start deciding, should we shift or should we still keep going for what we initially planned for, right? So then maybe a 10-year would be a refurbish, if you will, so that now that's the new year, you know, 2020, 2035, 2035 to 2055, that kind of stuff. So this one is not an update, this is a brand-new comprehensive. Those would be updates.
All right.
I mean, I mean, my biggest fear, right? The same thing that happened with the old plan, to, to, to nobody's fault. But it's like, as people change, as boards change, as, you know, development directors come and go, it just, it gets swept under the rug and forgotten. And there's nothing we can say or do right now that's going to be an answer to that. But it's just, it's what safeguards we have to play this time to make sure that doesn't happen.
But I would argue that with, I mean, in a perfect world, you get to 15 years out and everything in your comprehensive plan happens. But that never happens. That's probably never happened in the history of a comprehensive plan, regardless of the size of the plan, whether it's a subarea or the entire plan. But there are certainly areas of the village that you can pick and see the direct impact of the comprehensive plan. That, even though that development at the train station has not happened, Uptown, the, the, the desire to get the grants that allowed for the street improvements along Ardmore up there, the wayfinding, all of that, part of that was the comprehensive plan. The study that was undertaken, there was a TOD study done, Transit Orient Development Study done, that led to an overlay zoning district that was created up there that got worked into our current comprehensive, I mean, current zoning map update or zoning update. That all was born from that comprehensive plan. A lot of the improvements on Villa were born of that comprehensive plan. So do we get everything? Maybe not. But we've got wayfinding at the end of the Great Western Trail that wasn't there. I mean, people look at the comprehensive plan, they see ideas. Maybe it doesn't get where you want it to get, but there are, I mean, it's easy to think that nothing got done from the last comprehensive plan because everything didn't get done or the biggest picture, you know, the biggest picture things didn't get done. But lots of things did. So that's, that's my argument for comprehensive planning. If we get two new parks out of this, two new parklets, that's something, right?
It is something.
Hopefully, it's more than two new parklets.
As a community that is deficient on our park, that is significant, yeah.
Either of you gentlemen on this side of me, have been looking that way? Have any questions, comments, discussion right now?
I checked all the things I found. Didn't realize when they sent this out on Tuesday, that was an updating.
You are welcome.
Good.
Just one item on, this is a detail, but we're, the North Avenue corridor and the catalyst site that's, that's highlighted in that subarea is incorrectly spotted on the plan. The, the red block is, oh, is about four blocks, should be four blocks east or west.
Yeah, it should be on that block where the...
With its one tower, with the one billboard in the middle.
Okay. Yep. Good note, thank you.
I hope you can fix that.
What, what I would say, what I would say, though, looking at that, and I'm not saying anything necessarily needs to change, but where you have the catalyst site could also be a catalyst site. Because that's the rear rabbit motel.
Yeah, it needs a slide.
It needs a slide, yes.
It does, you're right, yep.
But that site, if that site could be a catalyst site, too.
That's the problem with the 30,000-foot, it's...
Completely, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
But regardless of what block it sort of sits at, seeing that little perspective at the catalyst site, you know, image there, these all make sense, right? I mean, they just really start to... Because that's really the only other, like, larger-scale sort of comprehensive plan type I mean, they just really start to sort of steer things in a direction, in a overwhelmingly planning that's sort of maybe referencing, unless there's some facility, what's that? positive way.
Thank you, that's a good cut.
Oh, no, I'm saying there is one. I'm saying there is a.
If you recall, the existing conditions memo referenced all the active planning documents that we used as a springboard for this plan.
Yep. And that's that information that'll be available online, but not sort of making this thing 170 pages?
Right, right, yeah. Appendix W.
So, Mark, on page 42, is the sidewalk system?
Yes.
Move that up, move your map up. I happen to live in that bottom southeast corner.
All right.
And I'm just wondering why you show east and west roads, and not the north and south roads. There is no sidewalks in that entire area, other than around Caduto Court, where there was the newer construction.
Sure. It specifically picks up gaps. So if there's a block or a lot width of side, a lot length of sidewalk, anything between that and the next is a gap. So if you look really close, there's actually little segments of blue in there to finish out the gap.
I know where they are.
That's why. Yeah, right, you probably.
But you're still, if you look, there's little sections of blue in the first, I think that's Oakland, just, just east of Villa Avenue.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
And none of that has, the red dashes.
Okay, yeah.
I, I walk this extensively all the time.
I'm assuming you'd like sidewalk in that area.
Running north and south.
What I'd like is the road redone the way Oak Brook Terrace does it, just south of Roosevelt Road. They have a cement flat curb that the male people drive down, and the blacktop doesn't crumble off the side and have ruts. I'm not for putting sidewalks in there. I just, I was wondering why you showed them on the east, east-west sidewalks, roads, but not on the north-south.
Yeah, so the, the intention was to actually capture that additional gap. So that's a, as Oscar pointed out, a error in the data, so, yep.
No, I'm happy with the way it's laid out.
That reminded me of something I want to mention. That's not directly related to the comprehensive plan, but that stretch of Summit that's unincorporated, they used to have pedestrian areas striped off on either side of the road, because there are no sidewalks. When York Township redid that, they got rid of them, and someone contacted York Township, and they were told there's no intention of ever putting them back. So I see moms pushing strollers. That's not in the village, but it, but it could be. I don't know if you have any contacts at York Township, but it'd be nice to get that striping back, because that's literally all it was.
Yeah, that ran, that ran from Roosevelt Road to, to reorded.
Yeah.
It used to be striped there, and it was striped about as wide as a sidewalk.
So on that particular area, it's just outside the Roosevelt, Roosevelt, Roosevelt Road sub-area. So it's not picked up on that sub-area as an annexation area, like it is on the North Avenue, picks up on there, but we account for it in our future land use map to eventually be in there, but it's not specifically called out as an annexation area. So I just wanted to be, to clarify on that.
Yeah.
We are planning for it, it's just not, didn't meet that sub-area requirement.
Yeah. But, that's also one of the few ways to, to cycle north-south across Roosevelt Road without dying, and even that's questionable.
Sure.
But it's gone, and that was, yeah, York Township said, yeah, they're gone, but.
Yeah, and the, the village-wide again, that's the blue, unincorporated capture.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Just outside the Roosevelt Road, sub-area.
A small thing on page 20, the economic development framework map. Just west of the number three on the St. Charles Road corridor, that's the bus lot. I know it was changed on the future land use map to be mixed-use, but it should match on that map. It's still, it got missed there.
Yep, see it.
Yep. Little thing, but.
Still a good pickup.
Yep. Worst spot for a bus lot ever, but it's a great opportunity site. Because there's nothing to tear down. Any other comments, questions, discussion? No, yeah, so, if there is nothing else, I just want to say that I'm really happy with the process, happy with the plan, and the sub-areas are particularly interesting, and that's what I've seen most people dig into, they usually do. But it's all good, beginning to end, it's a good, I think it's a good job of capturing who we are, who we think we are, who we think we want to be, as a community. I know very few people not on this dais are gonna read every word, and some of us might not have read every word that are up here, but it's, I, I'm very happy with it. And I know there's probably a handful of comments to, to incorporate, but I would be in favor of, of recommending approval with those modifications to the degree that they could be worked in. And unless anybody has other discussions or comments, then we'd need a motion whenever somebody's ready.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of PZ 25-3 for a variation.
Hold on.
What?
Wrong staff report.
Oh, whoops. I'll make a recommendation to approve PZ 25-05 for a comprehensive plan as depicted in Exhibit A with noted changes.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Calvert. Are there any questions or comments or discussion on the motion? If not, we have a motion to recommend approval. So roll call, Calvert?
Yes.
Hofstra?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Lemieux?
Yes.
Letky?
Yes.
Romano?
Yes.
I to vote yes, our recommendation passes to the village board. Good luck to the village.
Thank you. We slated for April 14th for village board, yep. So that gives us a little bit of time to work with House Levine, make that final adoption document, so it's ready to go on April 14th.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, any other discussion items from staff?
As of right now, there is no pending petitions that'll be ready for the April planning and zoning agenda.
Okay.
There's still a little bit of time before we can actually call it and, and cancel the meeting, but as of right now, it's looking like we won't have it. So just a heads up.
Okay. Also, any public comments on non-agenda items? If anybody from the public? Or, I mean.
On the plan?
Yeah, if you could just come up to the mic, because we're being recorded, I'm sorry to make you walk over here, but, and then just state your name.
I have difficulty talking.
Yeah.
My name is Vicky Wade. I live on 26 South Summit. Listening to everything, there's some gaps. He didn't mention the comprehensive plan, and you didn't mention. I kind of passed through my head. What about infrastructure? You have aging infrastructure. You want to redevelop, that'll have to be redeveloped then. If you have everything torn up, and you just have to go have it down beforehand, so it's a pre-planning thing. Secondly, environmental concerns. With all the redevelopment and all the building, what about runoff? What about sewage? It's kind of, it's, um, infrastructure as well as environmental. Third, taxes. I know the developer who gets the land, he'll have a taxes, but you have planning partners. Some things you don't have planned. You will have to increase taxes. The village will increase taxes, not the individual plot, but overall. To build, to maintain, where's that coming from? What kind of percentage of the tax increases will you have? That I would like to see.
So, just to comment very quickly on that, and we could put this in, the, I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if we want to put this in with the previous public hearing, for notes, we should. As far as the infrastructure, there is a portion of this plan about infrastructure. We didn't discuss it up here, but it's been reviewed.
Yes.
And it's been reviewed by staff, and it will be reviewed by the village board. As far as taxes, we don't have any.
Ah-ha.
So, we.
That comes from the accountability.
No, it comes, well, that actually comes from your elected officials, who are the only one who can levy taxes.
Yes, but.
We, we have no ability to levy taxes, even if we thought it was appropriate.
But when you have to. We are in the beginnings of a substantial recession. We're in the very beginning, we're at the very beginning of a trade war. Nobody knows. Five years, 10 years down the line, what any price will be. Do you have to make plans for it? Now, you see, I don't want to come up with, do you have a plan? You don't have a partner. Will you have to plan? Will you increase taxes? I know, you will.
Again, we don't, we don't, we don't levy taxes, that's the village board.
I know. But you have to think about it. For the approval of the plan, for basic membership, citizen membership to come out to your meet, for a brochure of misinformation will be passed on that. I endure it. But because of that, there'll be some thing will have to be addressed. So you have to think outside the lines.
Yes. And I, I hope that our village board is, is capable of fine-tuning the budget year over year, and if you, there's a municipal election coming up, so.
Yes, and nobody's said anything about it.
Well, that's, I'm not electioneering, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. All right, any other comments on non-agenda items?
Just really quick, thank you, gentlemen, for all you've done and the time and investment I can try to use to make all the meetings, but appreciate what you're doing, because we directly forward thinking this village needs to make some changes, this village needs to grow and encourage future generations and future businesses to call this village home.
Thank you. And, yeah, thanks again to the consultants and staff who did the lion's share of the work, we just get to take the kudos now. There's a lot of reading, I'm not gonna lie, I spent about a week going over it twice. Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies. All right.
Kudos to you, too, Mr. Chair. Very good.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you. All right, there's no other comments on non-agenda items, no comments from the commission? I move that we adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.[1676.33]